Ladies and gentlemen, please step up. With my trustee Nico.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, the lack of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and self-defense for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. With the like twenty 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 five board meeting. Just a reminder, we have emergency access to the building. Please go to the vehicle, please not leave until so directed by the services personnel. Your phone, we're going to get away out of the house. Hey, uh, both words.
Yeah, I'd like to request approval for the board meeting minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and then it.
So, any changes or additions?
Yeah.
On paper.
Hi.
Okay. Little trigger.
Good evening, everybody. Real quick tonight, the bills for the period of seven eighteen through the twenty eighth of July. Total six seventy-one, eight fifty-three, sixty-four. Five largest bills. Number one, Winter Brothers for landfill fees, fifty-seven, seven seventy-eighty-two. We had some leftover stuff from Christmas that hadn't been cleaned up, so that's why it's so high. Vessel Life, Losap for the for the part apartment, fifty thousand eight ninety-seven sixty-six. H two M working on a sewer extension, fifty thousand two sixty thirty-five, that's. Yes, that is going by. P S E G Long Island, thirty-one, five ninety-nine, thirty-eight electricity down from what used to be, and we're going to be looking at to see exactly how much we can save so far, so. How to report on that. Build your belt port, thirty thousand, bought a bucket truck from them.
We put back, unfortunately, we put it back.
So now exclusively ours in Beltport does more than any of them anymore.
Okay, total of those bills.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight, one one, if I could have a clue.
Second.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so you mentioned D S E G I as a business owner right now, but they build us, how often does the village get built? There's a lot.
Every month.
They fund the bills from B S C G.
Every month.
It's monthly. So you're you're looking at comparative to like the the same month last year.
We're gonna look at, but it used to be before we did our program, and I have some awesome ones.
But at first, plus, you're saying.
But it's down. It's definitely.
Definitely down.
At least six, I'm I'm estimating sixty percent less, I mean forty percent less, so it's like six. But I'll have.
That's that's true.
That's true.
Tim, and all those lines, twenty, thirty, well, different meetings.
Right, I'm standing, I'm standing. Accumulatively, it appears to be down.
Yes.
Great. So I second that one. Thanks.
Hi.
Okay. You want a public hearings? This is a resolution, we request approval for George Patrick. We imagine an exchange with Patrick. Through sewer easement for both vest light apartments. Horseman, and the Blue Point Board. And with the whole series of numbers, as well as the gravity sewer lines and any other sewer district increases on the property of the Fernando and Sun Development, but that is, that there's a sewer lines that go from the brewery, the cross means shoot, there's an archway, and through that, and when they start this project, they're going to be running a new sewer line. Paid for by then, tearing up the sidewalk, running it down to the corner of May West, have to get around that alley, back down to a sewer line. And that is truth of things, that obviously takes care of this piece of the theater. And we're also, just as part of the project, they will be putting in a new pump station in the cemetery across the street, which allows us to extend the sewer beyond going east to going west, west of the world. So, um, this is a great move because it will give us more capacity. They'll be able to.
So in essence, what we're talking about here, what they're proposing to do, my word tonight, obviates the need for these existing ones. We don't need them anymore.
And the improvements are improvements that we need to be ready with. We'll get.
They'll be upgraded, I'm assuming this is this is this is much older, this this infrastructure.
Yeah, it really is, it's a huge boom.
Motion or second?
A motion, I think.
You know, I don't know that the mayor's actually allowed to make a motion.
I don't know, but you'll be.
Then I'll second.
All right.
I.
Robert's rule strike.
And I know Mr. Kennedy's with the sun playing basketball someplace. Wait. Why are I haven't been there?
Happy Monday. Um, yeah, a busy Wednesday this week at the Chamber, but I first, it's one of the things, Susan, for coming to our grand opening last weekend, or last week for the Grill on South Ocean, if you haven't been yet. Please go and visit them.
I had dinner there, it's fantastic. It's the grill.
So Wednesday, July thirtieth, we have the grand reopening and ribbon cutting for Rumba. They're gonna be unveiling their new rooftop. July thirtieth, we also have Christmas in July.
I've got my.
Sure, but then all ready to talk. We've got a lot of cookies coming, so if you're a fan of Christmas cookies, come on down, there are tickets on sale on the Chamber website. Thursday is the disco night for a lot after five. Thank you so much, Mr. Bear, for being one of our volunteers at our chamber table. I can't appreciate you more. Uh, August sixth, the Latino Leadership Connect Committee is holding their Hispanic Heritage Celebration kickoff with a bingo night at seven P M. at the La Grand Amazonia. And there's gonna be bingo boards, five dollars, four for twenty, so come on down if you're free, seven P M. August eighth, we have circus on May, five to nine, very friendly, we're gonna have a bunch of games and entertainment for kids and family. August eleventh is the St. Liborada honorary reception for Jean Parrot. It's gonna be held at Patch Off Fire Department from six P M. to eight P M.
That's right, that's the same night.
We have a board meeting.
Yeah, so maybe we'll all go after the meeting's over.
The firehouse?
The spaghetti meatballs.
There's no short meeting then.
Make sure you're hungry, come on now. Uh, the next event we're gonna be having is August sixteenth, we're having a stuff the bus, the backpack drive, and it's gonna be at the Staples Shopping Center from ten A M. to three P M. It's being held, we're hosted by the Mirror Health State Farm Agency in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce, and it's benefiting the Patch Off Met for Youth and Community Services. So if you guys know anybody, or if you are interested in drop off locations, they're gonna have one. Bravo, Record Stop, and that's at that State Farm as well. August twentieth, you have our annual by Chamber event in collaboration with the Port Jefferson Chamber. And it's gonna be held at Castaway's in Port Jeff from six P M. to eight P M. Let's come down to network, let's do so. September sixth is obviously St. Liborada, it'll be from twelve to five. If you need Pilates, please get your applications in, because spots are going, but very. It's good, we have surprises for you guys. September twentieth, this is seventh annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration, at the Patch Off Theater, and it'll be at seven P M. Tickets are not live yet, but should be soon. And September thirtieth is the eighth annual Power and Yells, we're we're gonna be celebrating Melissa Bonilla, Maria Shering, Maria Simpson, and Lori Belmonte at Gairo. If you are interested in coming, that's the thirtieth, it starts at six P M., and the tickets are left here.
Slow time of year, it sounds like. So I've learned so much over the last, but I found out about emo.
Okay, tough.
Emo, it stands for emotional music.
For emotional.
I was about twenty yards away from the emotional music scene. And I wasn't sure if it was music or something else.
That's all that I have for today.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye. Did you go with stories? Good. Um, so this is my first Parks and Recreation Report. And the office gave me a few things to talk about, so I'm gonna pick four of them. Uh, the most, um, the ones that are coming up the soonest, first of all, Grace House Baby Music Festival just happened, as everybody knows, and apparently it was a great success, no problems, I understand.
I was there last night, it's a fantastic, beautiful night out on the first time.
Yeah, live music, food, drinks, so that seemed to go well. Uh, this Friday at six o'clock is the hip hop dance program performance at Shorefront Parks Band Show. Kids have been dancing for three weeks to learn how to do this, and uh, registration for Fall of Hip Hop begins on August fourth, so there's one announcement. Um, Saturday, August second, from seven to nine, Amber Ferrari, Joplin's Pearl, and Benatar perform at the Shorefront Parks Band Show, everybody's welcome. And the last item is Saturday, August twenty-third, our forty-second annual Snapper Derby at Mastata. And that's from one o'clock, registration is right beforehand, you have to be six or older, five dollars for a single, eight dollars for a double. And prizes are rewarded for the first fish caught, the most fish caught, and the biggest fish. So the Parks and Recs oldest institution for Snapper.
Yeah, so forty-two, forty-two years, isn't it actually longer than that?
Seems like it, seems like it's been going on my life.
Yeah, it was going on when I was a kid.
Still gathered, we've just hung up.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, anybody who hasn't been to the hip hop recitals, they're kind of new, but they're fabulous, to see those kids. They haven't had much time to learn, and it's a fun little time down there, that Park with the bench. All right, and some resolutions, so request approval to hire Jack Begner as talk security at eighteen dollars an hour, starting July twenty ninth.
Motion. Second.
Hi. Uh, request approval to hire Aiden Murphy as splash pad attendant, sixteen dollars an hour, starting July twenty ninth also.
Second.
Hi. Uh, request approval for Patrick Flood as cashier, uh, sixteen dollars and fifty cents an hour, also starting July twenty ninth.
Second.
Hi. And last but not least, request approval for the Police Athletic League to use Bay Avenue Soccer Field on Saturdays from eight A M. to three P M., starting September sixth through November fifteenth.
Second.
Hi, that's a fabulous program, we went down last year, yes, uh, one evening, and just the tremendous use of that facility for the for the police athletic.
Cute, so.
Yeah, I think the other thing too that you gotta remember, what happened in Patrick? One of the lifeguards that had the rescue the other day, of the, it probably been three years old, three years old. And, uh, everything.
Yeah.
The whole kit. C P R, so you know, when you take a look at that pool, the, um, the guards did a little ball trick, they reacted very well. Yeah, and it almost, Maria sees you, the, uh, the, the, that, that pool program, I think they had like a hundred, hundred thirty kids in some of them.
Huge hub of activity in the summertime, those of us that don't get down there, don't realize between sailing programs and camps, the pool, it's, there's just so much going on down there, it's Chinese fire.
Yeah, and the music festival on top of it.
Those, those parks. Just so many problems. Trustee, bring him.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we'll start off with your planning and zoning report for this evening. Uh, tomorrow evening here, we will have, uh, the next planning board meeting, we have four new applications. Uh, two of them are actually a double up, because the underground music venue that's on Oak Street um, is going to be, they've requested to move that into the basement of that location, they're gonna be putting an elevator in for handicap accessibility. And on the first floor, they wanna put in some dental offices. So those are two new applications that are pending on planning for tomorrow. Uh, another one that's, uh, new, ish, is that flipped in again, has come forth with a backyard patio, well, Neil's backyard patio this time, um, they're requesting a special permit for that, so that should be an interesting application. We'll watch on that. Um, and there's also a home on North Ocean Avenue that's looking for a renovation and a new barrage in the back. Uh, three adjourned applications for the planning board meeting, and that's it on that one. Um, Z B A did meet on the fifteenth, there were no new applications during that meeting. Uh, and their next meeting is scheduled for August fifth, but I haven't yet received the agenda. Uh, so once I do receive it, I will post it online as always, so be sure to check up on the website, uh, for updates on that. All right, onto my wish list, I'm requesting approval for the residents of Lee Avenue to hold a block party on Saturday, August sixteenth, from two P M. to nine P M. With road closure from one P M. to ten P M. And I'll just add in there that will, uh, allow alcoholic beverages on the streets for that particular day, just so that we cover all the bases for anyone that might wish to have a little cocktail or two on the street.
Second.
Hi.
Uh, block parties are popular, so we're gonna add another one in, I'm requesting approval for the residents of Wood Avenue to hold a block party on Saturday, September sixth, from two P M. to eight P M. with road closure from twelve P M. to nine P M. And we'll add the same product in there for their enjoyment of beverages.
Yeah, I'll second that. Good.
Hi.
Hi.
And that's all we have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone. It's tough following, pardon.
Fun.
Just with this boring stuff that I have. Uh, request approval to lower the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year tax budget by six hundred and fifty dollars and refund same to the owner of four eighty-five South, South. Left out the eight, I'm counting that way. South of Shun Avenue, as a motion.
I'll say, and I assume it's, uh, Mr. Reitzel's home that we, uh,
That we.
That's the, the refuse, Steve, it's an unoccupied dwelling at this point.
That, and we did that last meeting, now we're gonna take it out of the, that's actual fun, so that's a motion.
Second.
Another, real exciting, request approval, uh, of a tax surcharge settlement totaling twelve thousand dollars to Murphy and Lynch for Stereo Gardens nine mirror repair for tax to use twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four, that's a motion.
Second.
I see. Money back.
I get the money's about it, that's, you know, the economic crack.
That it's.
That's all I have, thank you.
We'll see, Reese. Good evening, uh, everyone, I I actually don't have, for the first time since I've been at trustee, I do not have the financial report uh, for the Building and Housing Department for the month of June, but I will have it at the next meeting. Uh, I do have one bit of, I think this is good news, those of you who follow these meetings, uh, trustee Brinkman mentioned the home, uh, resident residence on North Ocean Avenue, it's actually the northwest corner of North Ocean Avenue and Cedar Grove Street, it's an old building, a big one, and there's been problems there, uh, feeding of federal cats, uh, geese, uh, windows that have been broken and missing. Uh, and so this is good news, it's on the agenda for the planning board meeting, the owners have decided they want to renovate the home, fix it up, and, uh, that's definitely a step in the right direction for the neighbors, uh, very pleased to to hear that. So again, I'll have the financial report, uh, for June at the next meeting in August. Uh, I'd like to say that, yeah, uh, the weather could have been better for the music festival, the weather was, uh, as someone who's helping out, a friend who was a vendor, it was, uh, you know, we had to clear the property for a thunderstorm on a Friday night, Thursday, I understand, was like a sellout for taking back Sunday. And then yesterday, with the, you know, the good lineup they had, the weather was definitely, um, you know, a bit of a, of a dammed on everything too, but you can't, you can't plan the weather for outdoor events, but I will say this, my observations, again, kudos to Maria and Bill, the entire Parks and Rec staff, um, D P W, those guys just, they seem to like that festival, they just, I, 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 a truck pulled up towards the end of the evening, Friday, and they came out like a small army, just all gung ho to get, clean up the garbage for the next day. Uh, and also, public safety, uh, there's a lot of go, a lot of commotion going on, and they keep their cool, they handle everything, and again, from what we understand, everybody had a good time, no incidents, a little rain.
Back on your trusty weeks, because I'm gonna add in our own deputy clerk Brown here, she was the paperwork queen behind this means, and none of that would have happened without her getting all of those.
I'm aware of that, yes, yes.
So thank you.
And for quite a bit of time before the festival, so good work to everybody from the village end to what I end to making it work. Uh, I would like to request an approval to go out to bid for, I'm not sure where this is, this really happened, when, yes, decorative streetlight poles and fixtures for the entire village, with a bid opening date of Thursday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
I. Look, the cost on those poles, six thousand, about three thousand. I think it's ten grand now, so.
A piece. Can't, can't take your state contract. Everything is done, so it's nice, we'll see. I'd like to request approval to accept the resignation of Public Safety Officer Vincent Valenti, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, that's motion.
Second.
Hi.
And finally, I'd like to request approval to set a public hearing to consider establishing two no parking spaces on the south side of South Street, uh, between Railroad Avenue and Claire Rose Boulevard, I think South Street is sometimes called Biz Marketing.
And Claire Rose and plus that, there you go. So what this is, is a driveway.
Yes.
It's a, it's a space we're going after the driveway.
Turning pretty easy, this is terrible.
That street, I've noticed, has become very busy, uh, because of the beautifully expanded and improved part of, that's a busy street all of a sudden. Used to be a road that you could take it as a back way, and there probably wouldn't be anybody on there, but it's quite busy now, so. So that's a motion to set a public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a date, yes, we have a date, our next meeting is, uh, what, this eleventh?
This one, maybe.
Just one, yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay, that shouldn't take too long.
All right, so, so a motion to set that public hearing on August eleven.
Hi.
Hi.
And that is all I have.
I see you will, wait, you replace, and the trustee creating the name's, and he was. She didn't take the place of him.
No.
Just, help me put it in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone. I would like to request approval for Patch Off Guards Council to film at the Shorefront Park Playground and Walkway on Wednesday, August sixth, from ten A M. to two P M., with an exception of the standard five hundred dollar film permit fee, motion?
Second.
Second. Bye.
I would like to request approval of change order number zero two for H two M project number P A T B twenty-four zero five B. Patch Off Watershed Sewer Project Phase Two Contract S Residential Sewer Connections in the amount of sixty thousand ninety-three dollars and eighty cents for a new contract amount of six million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred three dollars and sixty-four cents, motion?
I'll make a second on that, and just the question, and this goes for the second one, these appear to be basically the bills, if you will, for two additional homes that were not on the original list, without possession. Okay.
And it's under the, the, the.
The, the, yeah.
Yeah.
So these, these two homeowners, they managed to get in under this.
Well, what happens too is, we, we go through the process, and when you get towards, you know, get towards the end of it, you see if there's additional funding that you could do, under, it's amazing.
Just outside of.
And so you reach out to people that initially, that the neighbor just went outside that zone?
Yes, so that means we'll do this neighbor, then the neighbor next, I was gonna say, why not?
True, of course, yeah, yeah, until the money comes. And so for.
It's a funny we have.
And so again, I'm sorry to ask, so for the, look, looking through this, for those who opted not to hook up at present cost, this is about what it costs, between fifty and sixty thousand dollars, took up sewer. Yeah, or whatever, hard to understand, some people turn that down, but it's a free country.
Second, little bit.
I, I.
And I would, would like to request approval of change order number zero three for H two M project number P A T B twenty-four zero five B. Patch Off Watershed Sewer Project Phase Two Contract S Residential Sewer Connections in the amount of fifty-one thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty cents for a new contract amount of six million eight hundred nineteen, seven hundred nine dollars and eighty-four cents, motion?
Second. Thanks. Hi.
And I would, uh, I would like to add by, um, giving kudos to everyone that worked on the, the festival, it was phenomenal, it was great. I love seeing so many.
Yeah, you never go over there.
Yes, it, it went great, uh, parking was great, uh, people were just so happy to be there. I went there, everything was just phenomenal, and I did speak to, um, boys from the village, and they were all happy, and, um, certain days were filled, other days were a little bit less, but I think it went great, um, I spoke to some people. Yes, and I spoke to some people there as well, and they loved it, and it was just very, very easy, um, the music I didn't hear, it's a lot. They're going less and less, but, um, they did great, everyone was happy.
Any other?
No, I want to comment. Love it, we are.
Evening, everybody, Don Marks, with sixty Connet Street, Stephen, welcome, congratulations. Last time I was up here moaning about speed bumps, I'm gonna change it a little bit, I believe, uh, the mayor, you suggested the possibility of of rumble strips. As rumble strips, they have on Bay Avenue by the school, River Avenue, and in front of the theater. The difference between the two is the speed bumps are a low frequency event, and the rumble strips are a high frequency event, and it just makes you chatter, the teeth chatter, okay? If that's the only alternative for Commons Street, I would like to give it a shot. Uh, based on the length of Commons Street, we really need two sets from Wiggins to Ocean, and one by me, and I could certainly assess the effectiveness. And maybe it's the way of the future. Uh, I don't think it'll reduce the volume, but certainly.
People go that way, people go that way.
Reduce the speed, and that's, that's a big problem. It's scary.
I think historically, uh, correct me if anybody thinks wrong, speed bumps are like sort of a warning, you're about to come to either a reduced speed zone or school, or someplace we need to be alert, and maybe, you know, and so the rattling certainly wakes you up. Whether it will slow people down significantly, I don't know, I I'm assuming it's less expensive than than these speed hubs. It's easier to install, and the village does a great job, our, not to denigrate Beltport, but our speed hubs are so much better than.
Well, you also don't have the problem with cars launching themselves.
Yes, of course, yeah, yeah.
Those are phenomenal, uh, even, even on the, when we're driving on the highway, and we, we feel that when we're going a little.
Oh, yeah.
It, it does help.
It wakes you up a lot.
Not even, it wakes you, it, it definitely wakes you up, I haven't experienced that part, but it does make you go a little bit slower, because the tire's being affected in myself. It would be.
I'll speak to, um, Rosemont, who does a saving, I'll get a course on it.
It's gotta be one with a magnitude less on a speed zone. And you don't need signs, because there's no sign, though, you don't need rumble strips.
So, uh, still have to be careful with snowplains, right?
I don't know about that.
So.
I would think so, yeah, makes sense. R T P W crew was fantastic, I will go a little farther.
Yeah, that's, we're, uh, announced, that's right.
I think that's, that, that, that gives the community the message, but it's not as strong, and with the fire department and everyone else.
If that's the only option, that's.
The more it is.
What I mean?
The more it is, you know, if done, Carmen is the cross town, the bend for so much traffic, those people avoid me. And, and they also avoid, uh, coming across the frontier. And, uh, I've stopped going across your street, uh, at this fact of, you know, it's residential, I'm not, I don't go through residential places to cross town. But I'm wondering if there's a traffic pattern.
Sure, well, the car is one of the longer streets, and then I'll be honest with you, I use it when I was towing a boat to East Patch Off, because I don't have to make all these turns, goes all the way to Conklin. Because I don't have to make all these turns, goes all the way to Conklin, um.
Yeah.
And, uh, but there's a lot of stop signs on Karma, I understand why.
Which are going slow, but.
Uh, yeah, you think, um, so, you know, people's blowing through the stop signs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's scary.
Many stop signs just to see.
Yeah. Red lights are a suggest.
Yes.
Come on.
No.
Really.
Thank you.
Talking for the best. Keep me posted, please. Any other comments, please?
Good evening. Neil Starkman, Bay Avenue, um. First, I can make a motion that the ledge on this podium be made a little higher. Every time I, it just seems to slide off, so maybe we can put that on the agenda. That may could be a first. First pass, um, welcome. You have some large shoes to fill. So good luck with that.
Thanks.
Thank you all for being here, um. We love it here, and that's the reason that I'm here tonight. Uh, so we have a hotel. We finally got our hotel. I'm gonna step back two seconds. I live on Bay, very short distance from Karma. People fly down that road, and it's true, and I don't know if rumble strips is gonna help. And Mr. Mayor, you're right, stop signs are just a suggestion. We need to start having a zero tolerance attitude in this village. So when somebody goes through a stop sign, I mean, what's, what's the fine for going through a stop sign? How many points? How much money? No, I'm not sure. The, the problem is that we can't really stop.
Yeah, that's not in our policies.
It's not even a perjury. So when you, when somebody goes through a speeding, they, they're not.
County Police.
So by PZ is the only one. So it's village court when they're lined up on the sidewalk, they're not in here for speeding tickets and stop signs.
Take care of the ticket. Here.
Right.
They take care of the ticket on the street.
So let's say somebody gets a ticket on the street for running a stop sign. What is that fine assessed by the village? I'm not sure. But there are times that that village, that that fine is reduced to, to a no point situation. To, uh, a lesser money situation. When you go through a moving violation like that, there are points and there, and there are fines.
The, the only times that it really happens to, if it's a village, is when you're not resident, you get a bag.
Yeah, so residents, non-residents, you blow a stop sign, there needs to be zero tolerance.
Okay.
You have, um, a speeding ticket, zero tolerance. You make a U-turn on Main Street, zero tolerance. Need to bring the respect back to the village. I'm, I'm sure you're, you're laughing because you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You need to bring the respect back to the village, and those are the articles that we should be reading in advance. That we're bringing the respect back to Patchog, and there's zero tolerance. I'm gonna move on. Thank you. So we have a hotel. Um, I was surprised that the, uh, planning board. Approved the application after the dismal, embarrassing report. Given by the applicant's architect and engineering team. I was exceptionally surprised. This was the night after I came here, which this board did a beautiful thing by enacting that new rooftop code for music. And, uh, the architect and engineers made their report at the prior planning board meeting. So I heard through the grapevine that there may be a decision the next night. I was shocked that that decision was made. So be it. They kick the can to you. There are now twenty several precision, uh, provisions. That need to be adhered to by that builder, that are gonna be overseen, I guess, by the building department. Most of them by the building inspector. We don't need to go through those tonight. Uh, but I also like to say that I, I don't feel like I'm here alone this evening, besides my amazing wife, who's always with me at my side. I've been speaking with a small group of people over the last several months, and there are people that live in Patchog. They cross, um, I guess you can call it the socioeconomic range of people of, of professions. And some retired, some, um. Have their children have gone through pat med schools like me, have gone through college, and they've come back home to roost. There are others that are first raising their families, that have very young children at a project, uh, that, uh, are going through the process right now. And we've come together over the last several months because we, we love it here, and a lot of it is, is due to what you've all done. We've come a long way here, but, uh, but now we have the hotel and there's some grave concerns about what's going to happen. And how these provisions are gonna be handled. So I guess without going through my list of presi, of provisions, because that'll do us no good here tonight. What is now gonna be the process by this village in dealing with this builder? I mean, one of the biggest ones is that they need to supply this traffic report. And, um, they've had two years to supply an adequate traffic report, and they have not. So this report, as we know, did not encompass, encompass so many issues that we face in the village. It was. It was an embarrassment. If I owned that arch, that engineering firm that supplied that, uh, report. I would be embarrassed as the owner of that, uh, firm. It was horrible. Um, I know that the, uh, building inspector is now going to be the final say on this report. Being the liaison to the, um, building department. Are there questions or are there demands being asked? Of this applicant as far as that traffic report, as far as having a complete report, as far as adding things like. The school buses that we don't hear about. The Division Street Bus Terminal, which I'm gonna get to in a second, but, um, the apartments across the street. How Carriage House is gonna affect that? How, um. The Kelly Apartments down in Mullford are gonna affect all this. Um, has, have these issues been discussed with this applicant to bring forth in that traffic? My answer to you is that these are, um, um, I don't know if you want ancillary, it's not the right word, but they are, um. They're part of an overall comprehensive traffic impact of this project. And that we've had discussions amongst ourselves as a board, and there's conversations down at the building and housing department. That yes, these are all being, I, I'm, for example, focused on the river division intersection as, as sort of an overflow part of this. Since that's kind of my intersection I go through all the time, and I have serious problems with the last change there. So, you know, there are discussions, yes. It, it's, it's a fluid situation right now. And yes, the inspectors are asking them for more tales and more input on that traffic report. Thank you. A major concern of the people that, uh, I've been speaking with, and, um. And there is great outreach. I just wanna let you know. The small committee that we put together that eventually will discuss in public, there's a lot of outreach from this committee to the public. Through, again, different sporting groups, the schools, things like that. So there's a lot of interest and, and a lot of people are watching. What's going on. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't come to the meetings, but we all know that people don't come up and speak. And we're finding that more and more because we've received, we've received a lot of positive feedback about things that have been going on, but at the same time. Many people are watching. Uh, Mr. Bojack has a Facebook page. A short time ago, he posted about the vandalism that has become. That has started over at the bowling alley, a broken glass, and then the village has put a notice on the building, I guess, trying to push along. Some, uh, some demos. So John, how many views have you had on that page to date? Twenty thousand views to date on a single posting. How many village residents do we have? Twelve thousand three hundred, twelve thousand five hundred? Almost twice as many village residents we have viewed. John's posting. So the world is watching all that's going here, and it's watching this board on what they're gonna do. And it's all about protecting the village, like I've always said, about quality of life enhancement and protecting quality of life issues. So it's not just Big Mouth Starkman up here speaking when he feels like it. There's a lot of people very interested in what's going on. And I'm hoping that's gonna roll a coaster. We're concerned about transparency, because now we're going into. Getting the final position for this building. We are gonna have a position. I guess one of the gentlemen that we speak with on a regular basis that's on the committee texted me this morning, wasn't able to be here. He asked. Of course. His question, his comments, while we're looking for the village to explain the process in which the provisions undergo execution. At whose discretion are the provisions completed to a level of satisfaction aligned to community standards? Where can the community gain visibility to this process? At the crux of this project and many that take place in the village, what steps does the board take to ensure transparency on project initiatives? And the potential impact on the community?
I don't mean, I didn't mean to cut off, I think you're kidding, but we have a very. Strong building department.
Yes.
Peter Sarah, the senior building inspector, did the tri-tech project.
Yes.
Sixty-two units. He's doing the Burlington Building, which M L U let go. The experience that we had, the kind of construction that they're talking about, and the needs that we had are very strong. I, if you doubt it, which it sounds like you do, and you don't think that we have the ability to do it. I don't know where else to go, because we do bring in outside engineering companies when we do the full site points. And then we, the construction points. This isn't a rinky-dink operation that you make it sound like. And that whoever that person is makes it sound like. We, we've done over the last twenty years. About a billion dollars worth of reconstruction in the village. And that billion dollars has shown itself in the value of properties within the village. So let's, let's be clear. When I sit here and I listen to this, I take it very personally. Because I busted my ass for twenty-one years doing this. If people don't think I'm doing my job, I'll leave. I'll leave right now. If I manage that department, these two support me with that, the village attorney is a very decent. We do what we can do to make sure it's the best project that it can be. We've met the father on the Seashore, we've met the N T A, we've met with. I've met with, uh. Uh, County Executive Board man about the buses that we're gonna begin to talk about. Because we've talked about that, that bus, our recommendation, that they take those buses and they put them in the Rancakama hub. We are not a hub anymore. The village of Patchog at one time, every bus route came through Patchog. We recommended, and he's agreed with us. I'll show you the letter at some point. He, he is, he's agreed with us. And I spoke to Charlie Barth, the commissioner, the Department of Public Works, about being able to move those bus routes. To the Rancakama hub, to where those buses can station themselves, where they have, because right now. We, we have the buses there, the bus drivers are coming here, because they don't have a bathroom, because they, they lock up. The, the train station. So don't think, and, and I get that sense, people think. We don't address those problems as we see. We address them immediately. But the problem is, we don't, we address them in a long way, but then we have to go to the next one. One of the, one of the things that, that's in that planning board is. Um, having a left turn at, at Division. We, we've gone to the county and made that request. To get that evaluation done. Now they will do a, a traffic evaluation and tell us whether they will, because it's their traffic law. So the, the pieces that you talked about. You know, now I'm asked, asked about, you know, speed bumps. We've done studies on that. We've had some terrible, terrible accidents of speeding cars hitting the speed bump and going here. Uh, on the, on the corner of Brook Street and South O'Shannon. The cop was chasing him, like, he, the guy went everywhere. Hit the fence, and it eventually ended up that couple was killed, he threw a stab in the leg. My point is, these are things that we look at, and then we take into account those things that work and those things that don't. And where do we go, and how do we go back to where? You know, I'm not a guy that goes out and beats some chicks on here. You will never see me on baseball. You'll never see me in a paper writing article. I don't do that. I just do my job. This is a job. This isn't, you know, a game I play, and I get very, very frustrated. And I listen to what, that, that perceived to be criticism of how we operate. This has been the most difficult year of that. And then I lost people that meant a lot to me on this street. They meant a lot to me, and it is, and we, we, we're now reconstructing themselves. Luckily, I looked down at my phone, we know my house, I saw Steve Fluga, goes to street, I said, that is a guy, you know? But it, it is. It is, this is a business, a sixteen million dollar budget. How we spend it and how we do it. We've had almost a hundred million dollars in grants in the last twenty years. We had about thirty million dollars came here for sewers. I'm a believer. I don't pay for anything. I will get the state or the county or someone. Pay for, pay me the streets, the, the sewers that will put in. Three years ago, three years ago. We, we decided we are, we are a sewer. Another four thousand gallons, a little million to. And into, to O E G C, Mutual and County Council. Do a thousand gallons, standard, or just two thousand gallons. Got seventeen, seventeen dollars. So now, at that time, the cost was about thirteen million dollars to fourteen million dollars. So I called up, at the time, the Councilman's Elders' office, he was saying he wanted to be a governor, and I said he's, you know. Councilman doesn't have anything on the apartment. So I squeezed people flag with your shoes. So now, now we're kept close to the money we need. Except the price now is twenty-two million dollars. So now I gotta come up with another rate. Now we'll find it. Now we'll make sure that it doesn't touch, that the resident gas fair, that it doesn't hit the businesses. But I will come up with, with another eight, ten million dollars. My point is, we're very, very far. We do all the things you want us to do. Every single item of it is a checklist. That checklist, I go over with the building authority, Susan, you go over the building authority, Kenny will go over. And it, it, it ends up in the attorney's hands to make sure that stuff that we came from, a lot of times, and. Not a lot of times, but there are times that things are put into those. Agreements. Which can't always do. But we do everything we can do.
I know that, Mr. Mayor, and, and at, at one point, uh, at, at no point. Did I even challenge the commitment to this village, or your care of the village, or any lack of, of, of caring. And the amount of work, we all know the work that you put in. My comment revolves around the transparency that's gonna happen. Will the public be allowed? Will we be allowed to have a discussion? In the context of these, of these twenty-seven provisions? All this. But that's, I, I think you mean, you mean conditions, I think, I think you're. Condition. Whether twenty-seven. Yeah, yeah, this is, I mean, I was on the planning board for twenty-three years, and this is, we, we've done a lot of huge projects, but maybe nothing is huge, well. Five takes care of it. Uh, and it's not uncommon for there to be a number of conditions on them, and they are basically, they have to be met. And this, this project's gonna take, what, two years probably? So there'll be many opportunities throughout, there'll be stages all the way, and the building inspector will be down there all the time. And they'll be checking to see that they're doing the things that they're asked to do.
I'm not sure I'm explaining myself correctly.
We, let's put it this way, we don't hold a public meeting, we did either one through five.
And there's no longer any public input at this point. It, it's up to our building department's expertise and knowledge and.
So that's it. That's, I, that is my question. That is the final answer. These conditions were set forth by the planning board of this village board. At this point. This is solely within this village. Behind doors of the building department, Mr. Sarich will be the final thing, and there will be no more comments or input from any public, anybody in the public. Well, no, well, no, two things. Yeah, now, yes, the conditions, these, they have to be enforced. Oftentimes, you know, with these things, these conditions, the planning board puts out, they need to be enforced.
Knowledge by our.
So the, this is an unusual step. We have all agreed, we've had one meeting so far, we decided it was a little bit premature to have another one until the planning board acted. But the community forum group that you and I both were at the initial meeting, that'll be an opportunity to, as things proceed. To ask questions, to, you know, see how things are going, test the waters, test the temperature. That's an unusual step that we've taken, uh.
As far as the forum, that.
Yeah, that's a huge step, but that, that will be an opportunity.
That group is expanded. It's starting with those initial meetings between, I think, three of us.
That group is expanded. It started with those initial meetings between, I think, three of us. That is expanded. So that's the group that I'm talking about. You don't know really. The, the members, but you would be willing to meet with that.
Well, I wasn't, I'm, I'm surprised, yeah, I wasn't invited to any follow-up meetings to the one we had.
We, um, correct, you are correct. Will you be willing to? We invite you or anybody else to come and join us to get an idea of. Our, our concerns. Please don't get me wrong, Paul, we've known each other a long time.
Absolutely.
You took me, uh, i- in the wrong way, and, and nobody on this board that we speak with, or this committee that I've been talking to. Negates the effort of this board. We all have the same mindset. We love it here. Our children are being raised here. Like I said earlier, it's due to the commitment of you up here. But we'd also like a little bit of input, especially, we talked about the four corners. But this is right on top of that residential neighborhood, and this is a little different. It's not in the business district. It's actually Mr. um, Matta Cone actually said that we're creating a second Main Street. Which was my fear from day one. That's what he said at the planning board. And if you remember from day one, I said, we're bringing Main Street into Backstreet. Everybody said, no, no, we're not doing that, but the architect said, we're making a new Main Street. So, you know, these are concerns. I, I get it, it's just, it's tall. Hey, I get it, I get it. Um, and I think that's, um, that's my question. And that's what I'm here to talk about.
Again, Mr. Sarich, not twenty-three years of the planning board, we've never been anything but fully transparent at every application. We've done a lot, we've done a lot of projects in twenty-three years, and some of them have been like, the sky's gonna fall. And it's been okay. And again, you need to, again, I'm not, I'm not dismissing your concerns, and thank you for bringing these forward. We need an active, involved citizenry in order to have good government and a good democratic process. And, uh, so I thank you for coming forward again, but. The mechanisms we have in place, one comment I made since moving from the planning board to this board. This is an extremely professional government we have here in the village of Pacho. We have outstanding people in, in key positions. And the building inspectors in the building department, that happens to be one of them. Um, so again. This isn't the first major project we've done. It is the first hotel we've done, uh, in all time. There were hotels here a hundred years ago. Uh, so I, for one, having lived here, my family for like two hundred fifty years, and I live around the corner from this also. I have complete faith that the process will work itself out. It's a gradual deliberative process, the building's not gonna go up like that. And there will be opportunities throughout to make sure it's done as well as it possibly can be.
Thank you. I'll pop you an email. And as far as the bus goes, I won't comment further. Thank you. Um, it's the right thing. That's killing that area.
We started talking to, um. It, County Executive back in March about this. I got a letter from the beginning of April, say that you agree to this. But now it's up to him to do it. If he doesn't want this, keep doing what I do, this.
And Dominic Thorn, give him a call.
I know, but I know you guys took care of that issue back on, uh, on Amity. Because they were losing Amity to redirect to come, to reorient down, uh, heading west on Division. And that was taken care of. So I know that we're all on the same page.
He's very concerned.
So thank you very much. Uh, good luck.
All right, okay, thank you.
The gentleman with the T-shirt in the back.
Mr. Mayor, I've watched you. Yes. Mr. Mayor, at the board, thank you for, uh, my name is Scott Noah, forty-four Terry Street, I'll be able to help my neighbors.
George, uh, forty-third street, Borriano.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you guys at the corner, near the corner house?
Yes.
Thank you. We have some issues, uh, on Terry Street in Taylor. Um, first one would be a health issue, and I was here about two years ago, we talked about the rat problem. Was by the dumpsters over there. Yeah, you did, you got the board, thankfully, you pushed it away from houses. They're out of control here. Um, the rats are actually coming into our houses. So, um.
I get a hold of it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's one member or multiple members that can speak to the business owners about, um, getting. More frequent pickups of the trash, because those dumpsters are overflowing on a regular basis. You also have a severe problem with legal dumping over there. And I know my girlfriend, my girlfriend has called the village a few times, and then the village sanitation comes, picks up. I don't know, uh, you have the gentleman that sweeps up over on Main Street, or every, you know, Monday through Friday. I don't know if he has a phone to contact maybe the sanitation department. I mean, he's, he's there a deck, so he sees what's going on. Um, it'd be great if he can contact sanitation. And, you know, eliminate us from making false calls to all of the businesses. Oh, that'd be a great help. And like I said, the rat population is, it, it's worse, as bad as we've ever seen it. So, I mean, we had one in our house last week, uh, they're underneath their deck, and, you know. They're burrowing under everybody's house and businesses over there. So it's a problem. Because they're coming now from the north side of Terry onto the south side of Terry.
And you see them at the daytime too.
Yeah.
Like you wouldn't even see, but now it's like, you know, they don't even, they don't even get scared, like they're where they're running around.
So you're sending dumpsters are behind the main street?
It's, uh, right behind the Capital One back. There's three dumpsters. And you have multiple, uh, restaurants. It, it's a buffet.
Yeah, but even when they pick it up, it's like, it's all on the floor, they take the rubbish, whatever it is, I guess, whatever dumpster, because it's on the floor.
Especially over the weekends, because there's no pickup. Yeah, so if, we, we need to abate them over there, and more frequent pickup, uh, I don't know, if you talk to businesses.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna go down to the building department and talk about this also, because they oversee dumpsters and things like that. If this owner, I'm responsible for my own business, to know when it's time, let's pick the dumpsters up and not let them, it makes common sense, don't let the garbage overflow.
And that's why we brought forth those new regulations to make sure that this was taken care of, so we, we have to revisit, make sure that they're being followed.
And, and you know, the drivers aren't gonna get out and pick up all the bags and throw them aside, which is gonna.
Well, the problem is when it gets so overflowing, stuff comes falling, and that's.
That's what's happening, falling out, this, when the fall, the employees just throw it on the side of the dumpsters. So, it, it's, like I said, it's been out of control, so worst we've ever seen it. So, it's one of the things that we really just use.
Our refuge, uh, go over this, go through that lot, and go by the dumpsters and pick up.
Be greatly appreciated. Hopefully, it can reduce the, the population.
If we get the exterminators in, like, you know, it'll take a little bit of time, but I think we can eradicate.
Yes.
Just to encourage you, I think we worked it at Old Street. Because, yeah, I, I don't know how years ago it was, but I saw them out there, rats.
I retired from New York City Police Department, twenty-six years, I worked in the transit system. They called the transit kangaroos, because they were dogs down there. So, and we've seen a few that are, you know. They're getting big, so, um, you know, any help that you can go away.
We'll definitely.
Try to press it on a bunch of different fronts to.
You have to, when we send your.
Um, well, that's the first issue. The second one is without question, public safety issue, and they had been mentioned, talk about rumble strips and speed bumps. Um, unfortunately, from Ryder Avenue down to Taylor Lane, Terry Street has been used basically as a racetrack. Uh, and this is twenty-four seven, and it's becoming dangerous. We have elderly on this block, it's a mixed juice block, commercial and residential. Elderly, we have children, and if you explain about your.
I have my little one that is a non autistic, and you know, he's like. Barely, you know, like I, I have to be with him at all time, and I am, but sometimes they say he's running out, he doesn't see the danger, so. People just keep on going. I had even my, even my little dog, you know, they run him on the plane, they go speeding. Last week, actually, I had a problem with the bus, because the bus picked my son up and she went speeding, so I called the company, and they changed the bus, so it's. You know, like, I, we have to make sure that, you know, especially the kids like this, he's a non autistic, he's. Part of hearing, so he's not, you know, he doesn't see what the danger is.
We need some sort of traffic control devices on that street. Um, it's literally out of control, and a lot of these vehicles are the same ones. You can hear the loud mufflers, it's the same people around the same time, so they're either employees, or people that just frequent Main Street on a regular basis. Yeah, if you, if you could, because I, I don't, again, I know code enforcement does, that's not their jurisdiction, they can't, can't enforce traffic or something like that.
This is not the first time we're, we're hearing about this on, on Terry, and, I mean, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm surprised, it's, it's not that long of a. Stretch of road, and they get to Taylor, it's, it's, they gotta turn.
I was here, I think, uh, last one, and I explained the same thing, same problem, so. I was told that, you know, it was gonna be taken care of, at least, you know, do something.
There, there have been a lot of close calls. There've been several accidents on the corner of, uh, Terry and Taylor.
They even hit the car, like, when the cars are parked, like, they, you know, they, they just keep on going, so.
Uh, there have been several accidents, a lot of close calls, you hear everyone talking on a regular basis. They treat those stop signs like they're optional. So, yeah, and then I had an accident, uh, at, at the end of June, uh, across from. Seventy-eight, uh, Terry Street. That was another, yeah, a question I have for you, is if it's possible. On the north side of Terry Street, that first spot opposite number seventy-eight, if you can make that a no parking. When you have a truck, a large vehicle is parked there, they can't see coming out of that parking lot. This guy pulled out right in front of me while I was going out, sorry, because he can't see traffic going westbound on Terry. So any large vehicles that are parked there, it is a blind spot. It's dangerous. Uh, the front spot, I know it's not a pay meter spot, so no money to be lost, so.
Safety concerns.
Yes, so, and fortunately, I was able to swerve out of the way, otherwise, it was still an accident, but I went a T-bone right to the drop side door. But the, the traffic on Terry is a major issue that needs to be dealt with. Uh, again, this, it's only a matter of time. It's not a question of if it's when somebody's gonna get seriously, or even possibly killed the way these people drive. And again, it's, uh, it's not the residents or the business owners that are there, it's people that are living, uh, that are visiting. In the area, so.
We're just usually after screw around Main Street.
Yes, yes, it, it, you know, people, people try to avoid Main Street, of course, but it gets to. Yeah, so if.
You, a hundred, a hundred percent have my support, since my car was totally on street.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Terry.
Yes, so, so you know.
My three-year-old Bobo was old.
It's a dangerous thing, um.
So, yes.
Yeah, my girlfriend was trying to back out, and I've seen many times when the, uh, school buses had to pick up her son. Sometimes.
They don't even stop.
Sometimes they don't stop. So, um, and I know, you know, the police can't be there twenty-four seven, it, it's impossible. So, but if you can speak with the fifth precinct commander, maybe we can get somebody over there from time to time. Especially at, at Terry and Taylor, uh, and Taylor. Where they, I mean, there's sometimes, they just, they, they don't even slow down at that stop sign, they come flying through there. And that's where several accidents, we had one that went into a bus stop over there last year.
And like you said, same thing happens on the stop sign, uh, right across from the house.
Yeah.
Has done, and if a big car drives right there, they don't see the stop sign. That would be the same thing on.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is an issue. Um, I don't know if there's anything else about traffic.
I think just the people, well, I don't know if they could put something, yeah, I know that they put like a sign or something, I don't know, why do I have to go find out for the autistic and.
Uh, she was asking about, uh, a special, uh, brand, or, uh, just a child. That's another issue.
I have like all the paperwork, like, it's doctor and stuff like that, I don't know, whatever you need.
We just need your information, I thought.
Um, and there's another issue, and again, I want to report it, because I talked to, uh, I was, uh, Mr. Thorn. About the, uh, about the homeless over there. Uh, we have seen, there's less in the area. And we appreciate that.
That, that we think so.
It's been an issue.
Is, is they've arrested a number of them on our forms?
Yes, I, I went through it myself, so I know. Um, but, uh, we do have some issues in that there's some, I don't know where they're from, but, uh, other than the Florida plates. You have a red car that comes, you know, there's nothing like walking your dog, seeing somebody using the bushes as the bathroom right across from your house. Or changing in the parking lot. I don't know if they told it, they did finally tell it?
I saw, I saw.
Thank you.
She came there and she was, I know it's delicious.
Um, so, and again, you know, I, and, uh, if you can talk to the precinct commander, to then, to have his units. Go to that, go to the parking lots behind the library, and, uh, by Ralph's and the bank over there. More frequently on the, on the forty-twelve and the first half of the, uh, first two shit, the midnight shift. Uh, that's where most of the problems are happening, that's where the car break-ins happen. Um, and also, you have a lot of fights from, trucking fights from the bars, and even some domestics. I myself have called, uh, nine-one-one, when some of the issues have happened, so.
Um, there's been some issues back where, uh, the arrow place was, potatoes might do, and sleep back in.
Yes, yes, I, I myself had, I went off to the recruiter's station, because they were breaking into the recruiter's cars. Uh, at, at, so, uh, again, any, anything that you can do. To deal with the fifth precincts, to have more frequent patrols, and even the public safety, you know, to get them to move along.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, it would be a big help, so, you know, with the, with the battle fights in the parking lot, when they're throwing at each other. You know, it's, it's not a fun thing to, to have to hear at one o'clock over there.
You have any idea which bar they're coming out?
Uh, it used to be James Joyce, uh, but apparently the crowd has moved down to Bertie's.
Bertie's.
Yeah, uh, but still, they use the parking lots.
Yeah.
So, um, but.
James Joyce has backed down.
Yes, that's why they moved to Bertie's. Um, but a, a, any assistance can be, uh, will be greatly appreciated, especially with the. With the traffic situation on Terry Street, because it is out of control, and it's not just specific times of day. This is twenty-four seven. So.
Can I just get your address?
Yeah, forty Terry Street, four, yeah, okay, right, the house in the corner, I live in the back.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Uh, he's doing better.
Doing better?
Yeah, I was a canine officer for seventeen years, tired of my guy, and he had a little health scare last week, so. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Now, Mr. Bojek. I'm gonna call you right now.
Hey, you know, I agree with you, we have enormous amazing. Um, no click, actually, so I just want to clarify what you raised about that picture, which was the notice. At the door of, of the bowling alley about, and I caught me by surprise, it's a, it's a notice from the village. Fix the roof, demolish the building. Yeah, you feel, you're familiar with that issue? It's caught me by surprise, I saw it, but caught me by surprise, there's a vast city of siblings as well.
Basically, if you put them on our list, they need to take the building down. So, so now there's a process.
It's just a performer way to get this moving.
Get it moving, right, because that's what we need.
If, if, if a building is in a condition that it's in, and the owner does not demolish it in a timely fashion. The village can say, hey, do it, or we're gonna, I'm gonna tell you, which is what we did.
So that's what's, you're accelerating the process.
Unfortunately, it's beginning of it, probably in ninety-day processes. Versus a thirty-day notice, but by the time you go through the process, it probably is up to ninety days of just. Right, the reality of.
Okay, but the reality might be, it might be on, if not left alone, it could be a hundred eighty days. Well, it's something you can ever do. Don't know what the town of Acade would do with zombie house, but frankly, very similar. Okay, same process.
That's our new home, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I saw the reasons for the, the, uh, the. Basilism, this was part, but that's the story, right? Have you done?
Come on, Walt, say something.
Walt, did you enjoy our meeting today? I thought you talked all low.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Say it.
Second.
So, Derek.
We're over, Tom.